Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, our mission statement.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll do a roll call. Margaret, here. Jessica.
Here.
Kyle.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Angie.
Here.
Sherry.
And I am here.
We get a board. Thank you.
Next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So, motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support. Chris, was that you?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the consent agenda as presented in the attachment documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian.
Just on the consent agenda, I want to point out that the personnel report was not up to this. My apologies. But we have one higher for childcare, Kathryn Holt. She's a 2018 graduate. She did her childcare program in the afternoon. So, welcome Kathryn.
What else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is our bond update. This is something we are doing every meeting to give anyone in attendance and out watching on TV an update on what is happening as we go along with our bond.
Okay, before we begin with our presentation, I do want to pass out for you copies of what each of the bondholders will receive. It's pretty interesting. It's a booklet that is about our district and about the bonds and the maturity and so forth, more just as a reference. If you're interested, look at the back part. It has the information about the district, the community, and so forth. That's really more information. The second item I have here is Jerry McLeal. He is with Ock. He is the representative for Ock. So, we're going to talk about the field turf project or the athletic complex renovations and turf. Jerry.
Thanks, Brian. As you mentioned, I'm Jerry McLeal. I'm a project director with Ock Construction. And we're in an exciting phase in your projects. The field turf was designed and bid out. Received multiple competitive bids, very good coverage, and we're happy to announce that we can recommend all the gold bidders as good as complete bids. We are bid within the bond budget that we had allowed. The process that we do, so you guys know, we go out through and do public advertising, public bid advertising, and open the bids publicly here. And then from that phase, we then interview each bidder to make sure that they completely understood the scope and are complete. With that process, we have the engineer and architect with us to make sure that there are any questions on the design and that's where we really make sure that everybody understood the package that was requested to be bid. And with that, we've got a good staple of contractors actually on the fencing. We have a local Richmond contractor that was low, was low by exactly over a package of like $60 or something. So, it's one of those good stories. And the rest of the project is moving along. We're in the design phase of the elementary, so it's very exciting, exciting times where we're at.
So, in your packet, you have a copy of all the documents that have been submitted to the bid process. Our recommendation is to go with Midwest Landscaping Group. Their total bid would be $812,890. For the chain link fences and gates around the facility would be RMD Holdings, all of the, it's a nationwide construction group. Again, as Jerry said, they're from Richmond, at $34,760. And the last bid, which is with the electrical, there's some electrical work that needs to be done and conduits and so forth under the field, is weight electrical contract for As we've talked many times before, this is the first of many projects, but this is the project that we could, within the timeframe, get done as we do in the design phase of the elementary school, the middle school, and so forth. So, it's not that this was a priority. It was the one we had, we could get them done. If you recall, we have three years to spend, 85% of our series, because we only sold the two years, or two series of bonds, so we have a shorter timeframe to get all the projects completed. Questions about turf or the fencing or...
Just maybe reiterate again when we believe the work is going to start, that kind of stuff, so that we just keep repeating.
Yeah, actually, that was one of the great things about what the administration was able to do, by giving us flexibility at the start time that allowed us to get more bidders. We received six bids on the turf, which when this was bidding, there were like a dozen projects in the state. So, there was a lot of competition for those turf contractors, but by allowing flexibility in the schedule, it allowed us to get a wide group of bidders. Successful bidder, I think, actually works out well because he has a time slot that opens up basically after Memorial Day. So, we start the actual construction kind of outside. It's, we always want to get started as soon as we can with these because we know football season's coming and we've got 10 to 12 weeks worth of work to get done. Michigan's weather, we always want to get started as soon as possible. So, the intent would be to start the field work following Memorial Day and then work to get it done as quickly as possible within that 10 to 12 week timeframe is what we're looking at. The fencing and some of the other things will happen kind of in line with that, but the fencing may finish maybe a week after the field. We want to make sure that we get all the heavy machinery through and out of there before we start putting the fence up.
So, when Jerry talked about the way that we gave the window that we could do this from April 1st, pretty much spring break, through, obviously, August is there. So, that was allowed us to get more people interested in the job because we had a larger window. And through the bidding process of waiting and picking the extra bidder, he has the window that's open beginning of Memorial, so it helps us allow for some of those home games. But we were originally going to move to away games just because we wanted to make sure the projects work really and to make sure. They're all very good, very good companies, at least at the turf that I've heard.
Okay. Anybody else? Do you have an official date for breaking ground yet on the field? Just personally after Memorial?
Yeah. If you guys want to do a groundbreaking on that, you can get some equipment out and schedule a date. It's kind of fun to do.
It is fun to do, and it might not be a bad idea for kickoff to the whole project.
So, that, I would look to probably do that maybe the Tuesday after Memorial Day because we'd have people mobilized out here. We asked for a little dirt so you could actually drill the shovel.
We have done that before in other, our last really big bond project, I need whatever it was, we did that, and it is, it is kind of cool.
It's a good celebration. It's something to celebrate with the projects. Those ribbon cuttings are, those are things to come out, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, in the action item that's before we tonight, there's language that allows superintendent to approve change orders up to a certain dollar amount. I did some research on how the last bond, and in May of 2014, which would have been just prior to my arrival, the board passed a resolution authorizing a certain dollar value, which was at the time $25,000. I'm recommending you go to the dollar value of the competitive bid, which is 24,924, which is one of the attachments in the document. But, you know, some objects seem contingency. And any change orders would always be back to the board in terms of, here's what was done in the past bond. I've given a running total of change orders. Things happen, and sometimes it would hold the project up if we have to come back and have the board authorize another dollar value if something were to come up. We do know within the scope, we have a lot of dirt there.
Yeah, so, part of, part of the process of getting this into the design timeline, one of the things that couldn't happen was the soil board. They came out actually after the bids and had done the soil boards. They'd have done it when we were trying to get out to the street and meet that timeframe that worked for so many bidders there to work the field. So, they were hoping for the frost to come in. Frost didn't come in this year like they hoped, so they did go out and get those bearings. There is more topsoil in the field than bidders had anticipated in the bid. We knew that, so we got unit prices of how much it would be to cut that out and bring back suitable fill. So, we have an idea of what that is. I mentioned to Brian that we're going to bring that and have another date to you to show, here's what we'd like to allow for. It was part of the consideration, actually, the low bidder, the second bidder, there was a big difference between the unit price. The low bidder was lower on unit price, making it even more attractive bid to contract with. But we'd like to present that to you so that you know, we don't, we don't, we don't want to take any more dirt than we have to. We want to stop and wait, but we get you the number of what it is. And even with that allowance, we're still within what we anticipated for the cost of the field.
And as I mentioned, we're looking to move in that topsoil behind the high school in other areas that we need to, like the ground, so it's not going, we're not going, we're trying not to move it twice. Move it once, we done. Any other questions? And just a reminder, the graphic is on the website under, I can put it up there if you'd like, on what the project will look like. In the design phase of the project, we brought in Mr. Reinhardt and several coaches. Reinhardt couldn't go all the meetings with this particular project. If you go up to the bond update, let's see, see the graphic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, it's a portion of our meeting for public comment. It is the time, if anyone would like to come up and address the board, they may do so. We have come up to the podium, and while it is not a question and answer period, if you have a question you need answered, if you would please write your name, telephone number, and a time when it is best that we can call you back, someone will get back with you. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, going to move on to our Board of Education, student rep report. Lexi.
Thank you. At the Lee School, the Marches Reading Month Committee is very busy planning events for the upcoming month, and staff and students are very excited to have the school board members and Mr. Walmsley come and reach them. February 21st was the second through fourth grade geography bee, and this was led by Mrs. Studer. And a huge congratulations to the winner, fourth grader Avery Gross. That is not an easy thing to do. Geography is not my thing. February 20th, the second graders took a field trip to Dr. Groenfeld to learn about dental health and professions in the community. The Lee School will be having the American Heart Association Assembly Wednesday, February 26th, to kick off the Kids' Heart Challenge. And February 28th is the next PBIS assembly with a focus on honesty. Moving to the middle school, they are now conducting their annual morally fundraiser. And the fifth graders started the annual Starbase Experience, and I know that was always one of my favorite memories of fifth grade, going to Starbase is such a cool experience for them. The Cooper Standard Stem Night was a great success with more than double the participation of last year. And the winter sports season is winding down. The RMS Band sounded great at their band pre-festival concert with their festival coming this Friday at the Anchor Bay High School at 4:00 p.m. And parent teacher conferences are coming up soon on March 4th and 5th. Lastly, to the high school, the RHS held a student versus staff dodgeball game at the assembly last Friday, and these are Castle's words, not mine, but as predicted, the staff was victorious. The assembly celebrated the fundraising for the American Heart Association. The student government held a blood drive today, which was well attended by students, staff, and even community members. The winter sports season is reaching its conclusion with multiple teams pushing for state titles. Wrestling team is competing in the quarterfinals and beyond this weekend in Kalamazoo, and the cheer and bowling teams will also be competing this weekend, but they're competing for regional titles. And lastly, for the high school, the orientation for the class of 2024 will take place in the high school auditorium on March 4th at 7:00 p.m. And that is all I have today.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walmsley.
Yeah, beginning with a district update first, with the end of the seventh semester, our top 10 has been announced at the high school level. This is pretty impressive just looking at these GPAs. Amanda Brown was a 4.060, 10, Sydney Christensen, 4.088. Laney Higman, 4.091. Emily Smarik, 4.115. Megan Schuster is a 6, 4.119. Two just takes it away from each other. And Nathan Ryan, 4.135. Gillian Maxim, 4.139. Allison Higman, 4.143. Gillian Sweeney, 4.153. And our Alexis Produski, 4.182, which is pretty impressive.
Number one in her class.
On May 10th, Mr. Castle will formally announce them, and all these families or students and family have been invited to attend the May, excuse me, on May 11th board meeting. With less than three months until the class of 2020 graduates, which is hard to believe. Just a reminder, parents out there, that this is the first class that requires 40 hours of community service to graduate. Mr. Castle, Mrs. Warwick, Mrs. Heather in the media center, and all the staff have been doing their due diligence to try to get the message out there, meaning individually with those that haven't done, but having that turned them in. And I think Mr. Bialce has probably heard every excuse or reason. So, we are working to make sure that no student, trying to make sure no student doesn't graduate because they haven't met the 40 hours. Monday is the pre-festival choir concert for middle school and high school at the auditorium. Next week on May, or excuse me, March, the elementary and middle school PTO and PTA has their spring book fairs. It's also, as Lexi said, during parent teacher conferences. Just a reminder, the parents next Wednesday afternoon, Thursday afternoon, and Thursday evening, our parent teacher conferences are a week from this, Wednesday and Thursday. Class of 2034 and 2035 preschool roundup will take place on March 11th at 5:30. We'll begin that evening with a dinner. We have a newspaper, and The Voice has corrected their error multiple times, so we have this running several times, advertising the preschool as well as kindergarten. 8,000 mailers went out last week to nine parents. The class of 2033, which is the incoming kindergarten class, will have their red roundup on Thursday, March 12th, again, beginning at 5:30 in the cafeteria. The parents are encouraged to preregister, so it helps with the food count. You can call Pam using the district line, 586-727-3565, extension 60 is our one. You can use the website by clicking on the icon, register that way. You can use your phone and using the QR code, register that. There's multiple ways you can get registered. Legislatively, we are waiting on some budgets. We know the governor's budget, so there's a couple of bills that passed or have been in consideration the week of February 14th. One is the flexibility on foreign language. This is expected to pass when the governor signs it. If you recall, there was a requirement several years ago that students have to have two consecutive years of foreign language in order to graduate. The legislators came in and passed a law that said if you complete ACT course, you don't have to do two years. The last time they did it twice, they passed it, but there was a sunset in the law. They changed the law, extended it. It technically runs out this year. So, the incoming eighth graders are back to the original two-year requirement for a world language. So, it is expected to pass both houses, and the governor has signed it, but this time without the sunset legislation, so it becomes permanent. The governor signed House Bill 5187 and 5188, Public Act, 29th and 30th of the year 2020. Basically, these bills require that any revenue lost from the school aid fund as a result of tax exemptions, particularly for data centers, would be, the state would reimburse the school aid fund that lost revenue, which we rely on the sales tax. Approximately 73% of the sales tax and used tax goes to the school aid fund, so any tax credits or incentive where people aren't paying their sales tax results in less money to the school aid budget. And there's actually, there's a statistic out there, there's actually more tax credits out there than what the state invested in public education, so. This, this week, the governor, again, last week and this week, the governor's announced her fast food challenge, trying to get as many students to fill out their fast food college application financial aid forms. Currently, Michigan ranks 28 out of 50 states, with only 56% of our students in the state completing the application. The application has been reduced and streamlined a little to help this, but the goal is to get our number up to 75% of this year's class of 20 completing their fast food. The House committee received an overview of the governor's K-12 budget. She's proposing distribution on a 1X, 1.5X formula. Where in the past, it's always been 2X. So, it shows Richmond will get about $225 per pupil if this passes. We are still waiting on the other bodies that are set in the House's budget to see where they fall. But the governor does show increased money for special education, English language learners, and campus funding, as well as increasing for grade start writing his preschool program, as well as teacher training program. And that's, to me, I think this is critical because as a state, we are, if not, we are, if we're not near it, we're there at a teacher shortage crisis. When you look at the amount of teacher colleges and what they're graduating, it will not keep up with the demand, and it will force more and more districts to hire substitutes until you can find a permanent teacher. So, every district's looking at this one and so forth. Just as a reminder, in a couple of weeks, we'll have a countywide school election. I just want to remind the committee, I've talked about it a couple of times, on March 10th. It is an MISD enhancement village that would benefit all districts in Macomb County, all 21 districts, as well as all charter schools in Macomb County. It's basically divided, the village rate, the money collected would be divided by a per pupil application. Richmond's anticipated to receive somewhere in the name of $600,000 if it passes for 10 years. So, depending on the priorities of the board, these are some of the things that it will help us do if it passes. Number one, we would be able to set aside dollars to replace buses. Our buses are not yearly replacement scheduled, though if you think about it, five years ago, we started replacing buses, and those buses already five years old. At the end of this bond, the ones we bought in 13, 14 bond, are really 10 years old already, so we, and a bus costs about $100,000 to replace. It allows for computer laptop and technology infrastructure replacements. As you know, when you buy a computer, as soon as you purchase, it's pretty much obsolete and so forth. It allows potentially with what you just heard tonight with the athletic turf, this board's going to have to make a decision how much they're going to allocate each year to put aside because in 10 years, you're going to have to replace the, or the board at that time is going to have to replace that turf. And so, you're going to have to, either the other option would be go to the board, the voters, and ask for another bond at that time period. It would allow you to begin making whole employees. Many of our employees still have not been made whole as when the state made their $470 cut. That's a big part of, that could happen. And these are all options. Nothing is defined on how the dollar, it's ultimately the board's decision. And it also allows you to maintain programs. I mean, as costs go up, as retirement rates go up, as healthcare rates go up, but the funding doesn't go up equal to the state. To maintain those programs and services for students, maintain lower class sizes or lower class sizes even more, it potentially could possibly eliminate fees for students. There's a variety of things that this could, these funds could be used for. All of it have benefited students of Richmond Community Schools, so I encourage the community to click on the website or go to the I C website and get more information regarding this upcoming village enhancement village. And finally, I don't normally do this, but I would like to just respond to some social media posts that have been put out there. Regardless of why those posts were put out there and the reason, I think it's important that people understand the big picture of the whole story. You know, as community members are aware, or you may not be, maybe I'm telling you for the first time, there is a social media site that has a mission that is called to welcome the Blue Dog, Blue Devil Watchstones. They're a group of concerned citizens who are looking to find ways to communicate with parents and community. Feel free to leave your comments and have open discussion regarding the current and ongoing situation with the district. Let's stick to the facts. All inappropriate comments will be deleted. We are here to pass on and share information, we are here to pass that information shared with us for public knowledge. We are not, we will not comment unless warranted. This is strictly informational, and that's the mission of the first state that gets on the top of this page. And again, I don't know if I'm seeing all of the stuff, but I've been given, several people have sent me clippings and snapshots of screenshots I have. So, normally, I don't give credence to any of these websites. If people have a question, this is the podium. We do all of our business in open session. We have never done anything behind closed doors. Every document that is available through a public meeting is available to the public from a budgetary perspective, et cetera. There are some under the closed session laws that are prohibited in attorney-client. So, with that said, I'd just like to set the record straight on some of the statements that have been made. Try not to use any names on it to protect the individual. But there is a, number one, the first thing as I'm reading through these, there was some concern regarding a telephone incident that happened in December of 2018. The facts that this individual stated on the website pertains to a former employee's perspective on the event and do not include all the details or all the facts. There were details that are left out. Whether or not they chose to leave them out, whether or not they refer a specific agenda, I don't know, and I don't really care. My perspective is, I want people to have the facts. In summary, the district conducted this investigation because it wanted to make sure that as a district, we were protected, that no laws were violated, including FERPO. The practice of recording telephone calls was directly ended in December of 18 and should not be happening in this district. The investigation yield that no employees will fully violate the law. The record, the report as stated says that the district is, has gave recommendations for the district implement, which we have, one of them being not to record and so forth. So, with that, that's the first thing. So with that, that's the first thing. The second, there was a statement on there that is inaccurate. It's, it's a spouse of a former employee, and this is the statement that's read. "Your beloved superintendent went out, hired senior citizens from its home area to unpack books at the middle school." First of all, that, that's not true from the perspective of, we didn't just unpack books. Reading resources, which this board has approved previously, was hired to organize a level of thousands of literacy library books. It's not just unpacking books and hooking and putting them on a shelf. You have to be a trained language arts person, understand the book, understand the level of the book, and how to label it and process it. If the project was simply just to open the box and put the books on the shelf, then I would have hired students or had students do it to complete community service though. But it required much more. Again, I don't know the reason these statements are being put, whether it's a lack of the information or again, a personal agenda, I don't know. Third, there is a spouse of a former employee alleged that I did nothing about the smell in the middle school office and put staff and students at risk. Five years ago, the district switched its custodial contract from viroplane to DMBIR, which the former district maintenance supervisor was now employed by DMBIR rather than the district. When that switch happened, all work orders did come from superintendent at the time because we did not have a maintenance and operation person. Those work orders were processed as they were received. The district contracted with ABM, now the current custodial, their on-staff plumber slash HVAC to look, to see if they could figure out where this smell was coming from. When they couldn't figure it out, we contracted with Metro Controls Wagner Plumber multiple times to come out and figure out where this smell was coming from. So the innuendos or the insinuation that nothing was done is not true. We tried to figure out, when the source was found, it was addressed and handled, despite the indication that it's, it's relying on when certain things were submitted, that is just simply not true. The athletic director, the director of athletics facilities and school safety, which is in his second position, year in the position, now gets all the work orders. For his first year, he did not receive them. He's had to figure out why he was not receiving them. So, but he gets all the work orders and processes. I do not process work orders anymore. Finally, fourth, there is a post, I guess you could say that there's a social media post that implies that I created a fake account called Kim Smith, and I am posting information on this page. I'm here to tell you, I had a Bible warning, I am not Kim Smith. No matter how much you would like for me to be Kim Smith, I am not. Do you think I really have the time and the desire to participate in the social media bantering that's taking place, most of which is uninformed individuals with a lack of the facts and appear to have an agenda other than what the social media site states, which is a group of concerned citizens who are looking for ways to communicate with parents and communities? And finally, to the administrator of the page, I think you need to go back and look at what the purpose of this page is that you wrote on January 3rd, 2020, as the purpose of this page, particularly of sticking to the facts, and all inappropriate comments will be deleted. If I am Kim Smith, as I'm being accused of, do you really think that the following statement regarding Kim Smith is appropriate? And if thing it states, "The only thing you're doing here, Kim Smith, is making yourself look like a bigger fool. Why don't you collect your," and it's an inappropriate word or a reference, "from your wife's purse and log into your own account? Statements like these speak volumes to a person's character." I don't know, I know this does not represent the good, upstanding individuals that make up this organization.
Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything? I do. I just wanted to say that I attended Board Member 101 training at the M A S B this Saturday in Lansing, and it was very interesting. I learned quite a bit, and I'm really, I learned a lot about what my role is expected to be here and stuff, so I'm just excited about it and just wanted to let everybody know I attended. Excellent. Good to hear. Anybody else?
Okay, I have a statement. I wanted to go back to our meeting in January where I addressed an individual that came before the board to make public comments. I explained at that time and I'll try to explain it again. Previously, prior to last year, the board responded when people came up to public comments, we made sure at the next meeting that we gave information back to the public of whatever questions or concerns that people had. And it was decided by the board that we would go back to that process and address people that came to the board at a prior meeting for public comment. So that is why the comments were made by me. As the board president, I speak on behalf of the board, and that is what I did that night, and that is what I will do again this evening with respect to Mr. Westerhoff, who came back to our meeting last time. And I want to apologize that I did miss his one question regarding the exit survey. And the answer to that is, the responsibility of the exit survey was the superintendent, not the Board of Education. And with respect to the other questions that he had, I did, after six attempts to speak with him, I did mail him the statement that I read at the previous meeting, and I know he said at the last meeting that that's something he wouldn't accept, but it had already been mailed out to him. So I feel that we have done everything we can as a board to get the message out to Mr. Westerhoff and make factual statements. Mr. Westerhoff made the statement at the last meeting that he thought that members of the board didn't like his wife, that we threw her under the bus. Nothing could be further from the truth. I would have to venture that most of the people on the board do not even know Mr. Westerhoff's wife. All we were doing as a board, he made statements, we were making factual statements back to set the story straight from the district's point of view. There's never the intention by anyone on this board to throw somebody under the bus or make them look bad. We just want to make the district look good and try to get factual information out. Moving on to our action items. Approval of the DECA overnight trip to the State Leadership International Conference. As we know, Mr. Wagner was here two weeks ago, made his presentation to us, and I believe he sent an email that they did have
They had, I know three, about three students that qualified for state. They're waiting to move on.
Did Mr. Castle, did he not hear about those other students?
Well, last I heard, it was, nothing had changed from what he delivered here.
Okay, okay. So there is a sample resolution?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight field trip request for qualifying DECA students to attend the DECA State Leadership Conference in Detroit and the DECA International Conference in Nashville as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It was Angela. Thank you. It's moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck to Mr. Wagner and his students. Next is approval of the 2020-2021 middle and high school course catalog. We had our presentation two weeks ago by the principals, and I know there were a couple of questions that board members had, so would we like to get those questions answered or make our motion first?
Like, I actually have a couple of questions of whether or not, how much time students are going to
Okay, wait, wait. So do
I think we need to make
Discussion first. Yeah, I know. It's proper to make the motion first. I'm just saying, we'd rather have questions first. Do we want to do it the proper?
Proper way.
Okay. All right, then there's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2020-21 middle school and high school course catalog as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Okay, Angela.
Yes, I just have actually two questions. One question is, how long are students given to pick their classes and then also approve classes with their parents and then bring it back in?
Can I ask, defer to the principals for that? Could they do, they deal with the daily?
Two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
Yeah, two to three weeks to get it loaded in the computer, have schedules, and so on and so forth. But to have it approved, their choice approved, that's the day that we hand the slips in. And then, then it's, turn it in the very next day if they're ready.
Okay, and so how, so from the time the student gets the, I guess, the option or the list to be able to pick their classes and fill out the form, when does that need to be back into the school life?
I would say, I want to say a week is, is the first deadline. And then the next week, we load it in the computer and then run the report to see what classes are actually going to run. But a minimum, I'd get it back within the first week.
Our target date is the Wednesday before spring break, because I believe it's April 1st, is to have everything to run our first list, like who's interested?
Yeah, so after, like after tonight, we're going to move on.
Right, moves pretty quick.
Yep.
Okay, so is there
So you're talking like five weeks?
As far as the high school, our councilor, Mrs. Lee Pack, is going around this week, explaining all the different classes, the options to the kids, so it's the same timeframe.
Okay, so they're all, should be getting them within the next week or so.
Yeah.
And everyone gets a deadline, like there's something in the paperwork to the parents that says when the deadline is.
Yeah, tomorrow, the builders will get the clean version, which is, has all the strikers gone, and then it'll just be the normal version. So they'll start working with their counselors, and we set a date of the April 1st to have everything in the system so we can run the first interest, course interest.
I just worry, I guess sometimes I know that students, you know, need to check maybe with their parents, and I'm not necessarily sure that a week is enough time with sometimes dealing with two households or, you know, both working parents. I was just curious.
Well, yeah, we don't do first come, first served. I mean, even if it's not in on time, the kids are put in classes randomly selected by their order of preference, and it just ran, it randomly runs and picks kids. So there wouldn't be a punishment for not having them in on the first day versus the seventh day or the eighth day or the 10th day.
So you'd be willing, you'd work with them if they don't get it in right?
Correct. We're trying to honor their first request, but as we do the scheduling, so for instance, I know, just because I'm a little more into it with Mr. Castle and the high school, when we run it, there may be only one hour of an AP Lit class that we can run because of the interest. And that hour fits, let's say, fourth hour in the tennis schedule. But that might eliminate kids from that AP because they want another course that's also running fourth hour, or we try. So we try to the best we can is to give them their first choices, but we have it, because at the middle school, we ask them multiple, I think they go down to 10, don't you?
It depends on what grade, yeah.
Depending, they could have like eight, what is your eight choices, let's say? And it could be a six or seven that we get them because of the way the scheduling or how many hours or how many sections we have in that.
And typically, the only kids that don't get their, like if they don't get their first choice, they're going to get like their next two, two or three. But usually, the kids that aren't happy with their schedules are the ones that turn it in after we run the scheduling.
After multiple prompts, they give it in.
At the high school, we run the carousel of courses next week, which is where all of the classes give a brief 15, 20-minute synopsis to all the kids, so that we want to make sure that they really understand what they're getting into, so that they're, you know, just because their friends are all taking the class, it's not a great idea for them to take the class. You need to really know what the content and workload is for those classes as well.
I think it's, I think it's great that even at the middle school level, our students get to pick classes and choose what they're interested in.
Thank you. I did have one more question about the algebra class that middle schoolers are able to take. How are students able to get into that class? Is that based on an NWA test or
MSEP score.
Or MSEP scores?
Yeah, NWA test, teacher recommendation, and then the third or the fourth criteria would be each of those kids is given an opportunity to opt out of seventh grade, so they don't have to take two math classes. It'd be similar to if to earn credit at the high school, the percentage of the content that you have mastered or grasped. They, we give them that test in the end of May, and then that score would be a tiebreaker between the last 27, 28, 29 kids to get into class.
And I did, thank you, but I was also wondering, I know that there was high demand there for this year in the algebra course. Is there any thought of maybe offering two sections or two courses with algebra for middle school?
Yeah, if there was, if there was enough to run two, we would run two. That's something I would have to get Mr. Wamsley on to bring back to say, okay, if we have a third class or a second class, what number can we support?
It comes down to, what's the lowest class size we're going to run? When we look at the high school, there are some class sizes that are lower, more of your AP courses, because we were losing kids to other districts, we were taking the most higher level classes, so we run some of them lower. As Ms. Bartel says, let's, let's just assume for the sake of discussion that we're going to put, there's 30 kids who want algebra one, and we try to target the class size, what, 25-ish?
Well, 20, 27, but I think this year, for that reason, we did go over the 27 on the seventh period day without any complaint, and I believe we went to 30. But if we had, like say we had 36, 37 that qualified, then that would be a tough decision.
So the question would be, would we add another section, another allocation to grade two, two classes of 18, this 36 example? It's roughly, every time you add a section, it's about 15 to 17 thousand dollars for a section, when you look at like your entire, et cetera, et cetera. So we, we get allocations to the building and then we staff them around based on the budget, how many teachers we have. We could obviously lower class sizes and add more, but it's, there's a cost.
We have a maximum class, like how many students are allowed in one classroom?
For the middle school, for the seventh period day core, it's 27.
And then the other classes at the elementary and the high school are based on the contract language, which I believe is 33 at the elementary school and 35 at the high school. And we try not, I mean, 33 elementary school kids is, 30 isn't, sorry, 30, it's, it's too many. And the 30, and there are some, there are some higher class at the high school, just because of scheduling and the uniqueness of it. Like for instance, the hours that we have all the TV, AI, or the AIS kids and, or like ENT leaving the building, we have less kids in the building, so our class sizes are going to be running lower at that time.
So like in three weeks or so, when we run the schedule, that would be a conversation that we would have, because we have, okay, what, where's our demand at? And then we would say, we have enough for two sections, because if you have enough to, you're pulling, you'd be pulling a student out of a population, you might go swap out that FTE. It doesn't always work out, but that's something that we sit down, when we get those numbers and say, okay, what do we have to run?
Thank you. It's exciting to hear seventh graders wanting to be on wait lists for algebra.
The question regarding the math, I had, and there's a, we added language regarding the test out of the Algebra I, just to clarify for parents. It says that seventh grade students scheduled into Algebra I, they are also automatically scheduled into seventh grade, math seventh grade course, which is what Ms. Bartel's talking about. In order to not have the two math courses, there's a, there's a test out assessment that's used, and that's administered to the building.
I would need a more library.
And then there is, there was, clarifying, the language on the P, that there was some misspellings, and so we cleaned that up, that we did not catch, as well as in the curriculum assessment. Everything highlighted and the green is changes from when you saw it last time to what we do now.
Okay, thank you. Good. Anybody else? Okay, it has been moved and supported and discussed. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of the 2020-2021 preschool and childcare offerings and rates. Again, we had a presentation two weeks ago by Mrs. Manguni and Mr. Wamsley. There's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the recommended three and four-year-old preschool offerings and tuition rates for the 2020-2021 school year as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Hearing now, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of fiscal year 2020 budget amendment number two. There's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve fiscal year 2020 budget amendment number two as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Angela, say you. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of athletic field renovations with respect to the bond project. There's a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent as outlined in the attached documentation and award contracts to Midwest Landscape Group Inc. for field turf installation for an amount not to exceed $812,890. Chain link fencing gates for fencing installation and replacement for an amount not to exceed $34,760. And Wade's Electrical Contracting, Inc. for electrical work for an amount not to exceed $17,668. The board further authorizes the superintendent to approve change orders for the bond projects up to the competitive bid threshold of $24,924 established by the Michigan Department of Education, but not to exceed the contingency fund allocated for the project. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond Series One is authorized.
Support. It wasn't my fault. And supported. Any discussion? Hearing now, I'll do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, amendment to the approved depositories for school funds.
So, I'll start, and I'm going to turn it over to Tammy. Basically, what we're looking at is in January, you approve what banks we could use for all of our school funds. We cannot put bond dollars in those same accounts, they have to be kept separate. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy to explain the recommendations.
Okay, we looked at four institutions for holding and investing the bond funds. Two had local branches in Richmond. What we selected was Michigan Liquid Asset Fund through PFM Asset Management. They offer safety, liquidity, and a solid yield. They offer active management of our portfolio to generate the most income for the district while maintaining the safety of principal and adequate liquidity to meet our needs when we have to make payments. Milaf, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, is sponsored by Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Association of School Administrators, and Michigan School Business Officials. It was created by schools and is governed by school leaders. As of June 30 of 19, over 530 schools, ISDs, and local governments had assets over $5.6 billion in Milaf. They're reputable and experienced in managing bond funds. As of March of 19, they were managing 86 bond proceeds with $1.6 billion in bond proceeds assets for Michigan schools and local governments, contacting three districts that were listed as references. They all gave great references that they feel it's a safe way to invest our money, very professional, easy to work with, there are no complaints, good service was mentioned several times. They still, some district is done with their bond, but they still use them for general fund investments. They did a great job guiding them through the investment process. They also assist with arbitrage rebate calculation, so from the time we start investing the bonds, they monitor how much our earnings are as compared to what our payments and interest rates that we will repay the bonds, so they'll determine whether we need to do a rebate. So, that is included in the services from Michigan Liquid Asset Fund and PFM. PFM is located in Ann Arbor, and the reason we're asking for the two depositories, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund and Fifth Third Bank, is because they are both used for custodial services by PFM. So, money would go into their accounts at their accounts that they hold for us.
The last thing, just it's important to realize that the money that we are going to be getting Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday, excuse me, which is about 30.
38 million?
38 million. We are, we, part of the bond application required that we're going to get interest or investments on that money, so we, this group is, that's what they do. They manage the investments to make sure that you can get the interest that you need for this project that are in the application.
And they do multiple bids so that if they want to look at, you know, as they start our portfolio, they will do multiple bids with multiple entities to pick where our yield would be the highest and yet still safe, so that they're maximizing our yield and keeping in mind that we want to take good care of our bond dollars for, so they're available for our project.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy and Brian, for that work. There's a sample resolution.
I motion to amend the depositories for school funds to include Michigan Liquid Asset Fund and Fifth Third Bank as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:55.